I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. That would take us into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes, councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held January 13, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did we get all i's dotted and t's crossed? Looks like we did, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Logan.
Agenda as circulated.
Thanks very much, councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Seeing no one ringing in, I will call for the vote. That motion carries as well. That brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and speak to council on any community-related matter. We have two presenters that let us know ahead of time today that they're interested in coming forward. I'll call forward first Mr. Mattias, who wanted to discuss water rates. Mr. Mattias? Come on up. You can come to the presenter's table here. Have a seat, introduce yourself, and please be welcome. And then you've got about five minutes or so to have a seat. Have a seat. Please make yourself comfortable.
I'm Ed Mattias. And AquaTerra bills coming in and there always more money they need, there more money they need. And us seniors, we cannot pass that cost on to anybody. Because if I was working for anybody else, I could always ask the boss for a little more money. And we're just about at the end.
Well, I appreciate your presentation, Mr. Mattias. Do you want to have a seat? You're more than welcome. You're more than welcome to be here. So did you just want to ensure that council had heard that perspective? Or did you have any questions?
We've got to do something with this, you know? Because we've got another, what, a $7, $8 increase this January. You know, so I don't know where it's going to end. And the taxes are going to go again $100 every year. So you're going to live in my own house and just about going to sell it to the city.
So I do see one councillor, at least in the queue, to ask maybe a question of you. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Ed, I know exactly where I came from. In my first term of council last term, the rate was proposed twice increases in three years, and it passed. And I know for myself I didn't go for it. I thought they were going too high. And personally, to come forward in three years for two rate increases is starting to get high, so I'm hoping that might be the last one that they came forward that came onto the bills in January, I presume. I don't know about the bill you have in your hand. But hopefully, they stay away for a while and not come again for more increases. But I made it quite clear that I thought two and three years was too much. So, and that's recorded.
And actually, water and garbage collection, there's only two of us living and, you know, maybe twice a month if we paid, you know, like two pickups. Every week.
So, Mr. Mattias, just out of curiosity, to just explore that a little further, do you say that with just the two of you in your household, that you would only need to put out your garbage every couple of weeks rather than weekly?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
But that don't work very good in the summertime in our heat. I don't want that garbage container to explode either, and also...
There's always practical considerations, isn't there? Well, just, I can pass on a little bit of information. Our second delegation, you might want to stick around for. They may have some information about sort of the overall, where AquaTerra's going. But I can pass on at least two things that I know. The first is that AquaTerra is doing a water treatment plant upgrade. So the plant that was built in the '70s is obviously under a lot of stress because it's got more population than it's serving now and higher standards that they have to meet. And that upgrade is about $58 million, if I remember correctly. So that's a part of the reason that the bills have been going up, is to help pay the cost of this plant upgrade. The second one that I want to pass on is you're not the first person that's come by to talk about solid waste or garbage pickup. There's been other people that have suggested that if we had a system where if you didn't need it, you didn't have to pay for it. And so that's something that council has, the past council showed a little bit of interest in exploring. Just some information to pass on. Anybody else with questions? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. One more fact I just want to throw out. Now it's a municipality-owned corporation, AquaTerra, by Towne of Saxmouth, the County of Grand Prairie, and the City of Grand Prairie. If this council someday does decide to say no to their rate increase, the agreement that they're in, we have to pass it down to the taxpayer in general revenue. So it's almost a hindrance to say no sometimes, but I have no problem to say no on it. So that's built in their agreement.
Well, they always say, because they've got to upgrade, upgrade, but they go ahead and buy that.
Company in Fairview?
Yes. And, you know, because we're collecting for, you know, reserve to have that, because everything wears out and it's got to be fixed and rebuilt and standards go up, but all of a sudden when this comes up...
I just want...
...into the reserve.
I just wanted to say thank you. And I also know some of the increases they made trying, I guess, to re-energize some of the old buildings they got, but there are some towns local to us, like Grand Cash, their monthly billing is every three months and they're low, but there's going to be major increases in that town because they know there's inefficiencies. So I'm not all going out against AquaTerra, but I don't want to see an increase for a long time. Thank you, Ed.
Okay, thank you. Could I get dismissed? I'd like to...
Of course, you're dismissed. Thank you very much for taking the time to come.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'll just, Mr. Mattias, I'll just note that the next presenter that let us know that they're going to come is actually the finance, chief financial officer of AquaTerra. So you may want to stay for five minutes. He already has to sit. Thank you very much for coming. As I said, this is the regular time that council has... Please have a seat, Mr. Mattias. More than welcome. Thank you again for coming. A time for anybody that wanted to come forward about any community-related matter, but we did have somebody else that let us know. Mr. Jason Schembry from AquaTerra is here, I think, dealing with an item that's later on in our agenda, but may have some other information to share. Mr. Schembry.
Thank you, Mayor Given, council and staff. Yes, it was an item later on in the agenda. I wanted to make sure I was available to be able to speak to any questions from that item which relates to the granting of first-ranking security to a financial institution that provides lending to us. So that was already presented to the Corporate Services Committee last week, so, and it's in your agenda package, so I'd be available for any questions on that particular item at the moment.
Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Schembry on the one agenda item that we have in our package dealing with AquaTerra? I don't see anybody ringing. Oh, councillor Rice?
Is this an annual thing that's just kind of like a housekeeping issue?
This is the first time for this one, Helen. This is the first time the bank took a closer look at the background behind AquaTerra and realized that we were already granting first-ranking security to all of our shareholders, even though we don't have any loans outstanding. Well, there's a very, very minute one with Saxmouth, but it's less than $200,000, so it's tiny. So we were already giving first-ranking security to shareholders. The bank didn't realize this, and the bank, of course, requires to be first-ranking security. So they noticed that, and so now they have a requirement for each of the shareholders to subordinate and postpone that first-ranking security to the bank.
We put the bank ahead of us.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Rice. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and not to put you on the spot, understanding you came for a different topic, but given Mr. Mattias's questions, can you maybe share with council and the public any of AquaTerra's financial indicators or targets that they're shooting for in their business plan with regard to rates?
The rates are set on a biannual basis or every other year. So I guess in answer to councillor McLean's question, two times in three years, it's every other year we would be in front of council to give our rate structure for the following two years. So the rates did go up for the 2013-2014 year predominantly in the wastewater area, which was, as you mentioned earlier, to fund the $58 million upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. And that's to fund growth into the next 25 years for Grand Prairie and also the extra compliances that are put on us by government that are required to be in place for 2016. So meets both of those requirements. We would be sitting down during this year, the early and mid-part of this year, to look at the rate structure required for the following two years, for 2015 and 16. It would be based on the previous two years' financial performance, where everything has come in with the previous rates and all of the expenditures of AquaTerra to meet that future target. Acquisitions like Watch On are actually designed for us to be able to get a higher return for AquaTerra and therefore return more to shareholders and by the same process help to control rates at the same time.
Mr. Schembry, can you also speak to the targets that the board has set in the business plan in terms of its vision for rates over the term and how we compare to other municipalities?
The board vision, and of course, we need to be fully, a fully cost-recovering business, which we are, and councillor McLean mentioned that, Grand Cash, and there'll be many other municipalities as well, will have to increase some of their water and wastewater rates because they are subsidizing through their property taxes. AquaTerra is standalone, so that doesn't happen. It's much more transparent. But the vision of the board at the moment is what they call 25 by 20. So the goal is that by the year 2020, the company will earn $25 million, be on a level to earn $25 million per year in cash flow, and through that will double its financial returns to shareholders. And the shareholders being predominantly the City of Grand Prairie to use in whatever programs, tax reduction schemes, or whatever, whatever fits within the city's budget.
Any further questions? Councillor Rice?
To you, I suppose it should be to Mr. Johnson, but it's come up to council several times, the suggestion of perhaps different size containers for a different price. So the ones we have are large. If someone like our original delegation, you know, doesn't have a hope of filling it, they could rent a smaller one and therefore reduce his monthly charges. So I just wondered, has the board ever discussed that? Because I know it's come to this table many times.
There have been many discussions regarding that, and there are many different options available as to a structure that, different to the structure we have now, that may be a benefit to some residents, but then sometimes it's not a benefit to all residents. I believe our next external customer survey is about to come out, I think. It may be this month, but it could be next month. And there'll be questions in that survey with regards to that, so we can get a better gauge from the larger populace of what people would like to see in that regard.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One more question in the queue. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to follow up to Bill's question, where are we with our rates now relative to other similar-sized cities, municipalities, and where is the board's goal to be in a few years?
The board's strategy is to be just below the, at or below the median of comparable cities in the region. And we're comparing ourselves with about seven or eight other municipalities. Some of them we couldn't use because they have too much of a blended rate structure, so you can't really get at what the true rate is for water, for wastewater, for solid waste. The ones we have been able to do that, we compare ourselves against. And as it stood for the 2013 year, we don't have all the data in yet for 2014, we were right in that median zone. We may have been like one or two cents above the median line of those seven or eight municipalities that we compare ourselves with. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks very much. Any further questions? I don't see anybody else in the queue, Mr. Schembry. Thanks very much for coming to speak to the one item that was on the agenda and all the other items that were raised by the earlier delegation. We'll deal with the agenda item later on. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so as we've had two delegations, as I said, this is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward if they have any issues or concerns or questions for council. I don't see anybody else in the council chamber that looks like they're going to be coming forward. So I will close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we would move on to committee business because we had no public hearings, we have no unfinished business, we had no reports, so we're straight into committee business. And I'll start us off with item 9.1, the Community Growth Committee from January 14. Councillor Thiessen, I think you're the last person standing on that committee to move that set of minutes. Would you care to do that for us?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes from Community Growth for January 14, 2014, as presented.
Thanks very much, councillor Thiessen. Any questions for councillor Thiessen on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we caught? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Thiessen, was there anything that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes from the business of that committee?
You know, it was actually, quite surprisingly, a rather slow committee meeting for coming back right out of the Christmas break. But we did deal with the matters of sign permitting as well as the development of a gas station lot out on the east side here, just up on the corner of 96.
Thanks very much, councillor Thiessen, for the recap, and thanks for stepping in for chairman O'Toole while he was away. We'd move on to 9.2, the Community Living Committee from January 14, and councillor Radburn, I think that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held on January 14, 2014.
Thanks very much. Councillor Radburn, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the Grand Prairie District Museum Collections Management Policy 119 as presented and receive the Grand Prairie District Museum Collections Procedure 19-1 for information. Lois Harper, Culture and Heritage Manager, who's just retiring, reported to committee that the current collection management policy and procedures are out of date with the changes in the standards and legislation related to museum collection. So this is, as she spoke, a necessary update. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the policies as presented? The policy and the procedure, which we're receiving for information? Seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Councillor Radburn, anything else that you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
One other agenda item, Mayor Given. Broadway Live Broadway funding request was, a report was brought back and staff had identified three potential sources for Mr. Perry to seek funding from. One would be the Arts Festival Committee funding. The other was sponsorship dollars. And the third would be a presentation to our four-year budget next fall. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. We've moved to 9.3, from January 21, the Community Safety Committee. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held January 21, 2014.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Looks like everything was in order, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, I think you had a couple of motions coming out of your committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move that council approve the request from Sucker Creek First Nation for the provisions of emergency call, answer, and fire dispatch services by the Northwest Regional Communications Center operated by the Grand Prairie Fire Department.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council amend the 2014 capital plan to include road upgrades to 132nd Avenue, 108-116th Street, a pathway connection along 108th Street, and traffic signals and street lighting at the intersection of 116th Street and 132nd Avenue in the amount of $2.6 million to come from the transportation off-site levy reserve.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing nothing, I would just take a second to highlight, councillor McLean, if I could. I think that this is in partnership with developers on the north end of the city, if I'm not mistaken, and this is essentially seeing 132nd west of 100th Street being paved and completed a lot sooner and in one chunk rather than in different parts of that car.
I think it's a very good move forward, and if anybody knows where 132 meets up to 116 and they get lights there, they'll know that it's overneeded, it's really needed. So I think it's very good.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything else you want to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do, too. The one about the fire surface for Sucker Creek First Nation, which was brought to us, it's just another group that's come in the northwest region. They didn't need any more staff members or anything. It's all going to work together, so it's a very good news story. And I would like to ask Rashul, just to speak a little bit to 132nd Avenue, because it's such a big improvement, about how the whining's going to happen there and about the lights, if he could, please. This is a big decision happening and I think that we said yes to.
Community Safety Director, would you like to speak to 132nd?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That's correct. As you pointed out, this project will be completed in partnership with developers in the north area of town. Basically, the idea of approving this amount from the transportation off-site levy is to get better pricing, as will be one contract going on instead of multiple small contracts for the whole area. So the city will see a significant reduction in the overall cost. So that is the main idea of presenting this request to council. In terms of timing, the asphalt component, two lanes, will be hopefully done next, during the summer season. And the street lights and the traffic signals will be depending on traffic volumes, so we will do count as soon as the road is paved. So we can see signals installed by fall 2014 or during 2015.
Thanks very much.
And thank you for that, Rashul. I just think that they may be installing them in the fall. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Councillor Rice, did you have a question or a comment on that agenda?
Very significant that the president of the Grand Prairie Firefighters Association, local 2770, and the fire chief attended, and he and the mayor signed a three-year fire services agreement. So I think that was good to get that done.
Yeah, fantastic news. The first, as the fire chief mentioned, the first freely negotiated or freely decided contract between the two, I think, in the city's history. At the very least, recent history. All the rest have gone to arbitration or mediation or some other format, but the two sides were able to come to an agreement, which is, I think, fantastic news. Thank you. And so Gary Roth, the Community Living Director, I think was leading the charge on that negotiation. So Gary, well done. And we'll move on to the Corporate Services Committee from January 21. Councillor Logan, I think that was your set of minutes.
Absolutely. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee of January 21, 2014.
Thanks very much, councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note anything out of place? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan, I think you had at least, oh, a few items of business coming out tonight.
Yeah, it's an exciting evening for me. The first item is the AquaTerra Subordination Agreement, which you just heard about from the representative from AquaTerra. And I'd like to move that council approve entering into the AquaTerra Shareholder Subordination and Postponement Agreement. Seeing as we likely don't have any real choice in the matter, the bank taking first position.
Thanks very much, councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Just note, from the committee meeting, was my understanding that if the shareholders chose not to do this, then that would result in significantly higher borrowing costs to the tune of about $300,000, is that correct?
Yes, in that order.
Thank you. Seeing nobody in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan?
Yes, I'd like to move that council approve a 2014 census and direct administration to initiate the proper RFP for the conduct of a 2014 census, including a coordinator. This was a positive discussion by the committee, given the change, rapid change in the makeup of our community and straighten the amount of population that it's important to keep on top of this matter, and probably financially beneficial to us to capture that growth in terms of monies from the senior level of government.
Councillor Logan, any discussion or debate on the motion? I see councillor McLean in the queue.
I just had a question maybe for Audrey, Legislative Service Manager. You probably talked about it at the committee. I don't sit on this committee. They're doing it in the springtime, which I think is probably maybe not the best time to do a census for overall population, when a lot of people are break up and gone or not around to say yes or no. Why wasn't it done in the fall?
Councillor Logan, would you like to speak to that, or maybe our legislative, deputy legislative services?
Well, maybe I could make a start, and then the proper administrator will come along and correct me, and I give you the good information. But of course, it's not truly sensitive to people who are out working in the oil patch or in lumber or anything anyway, because there is normally a resident in the household and that person will capture what that population is. I think that in past times when we've looked at census, we've found that that's not a significant factor. But having said that, maybe speaking out of ignorance...
I think you may be right, but I think there's also another factor at play as well. Ms. Turney?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, there is legislation in the province of Alberta that requires any municipality that is conducting a census to do it between April 1st and June 30th. We're obligated to conduct it within that timeframe.
Thanks very much. I see councillor Rice in the queue.
...to June timeframe, that would obviously catch all the snowbirds who would be back home by then.
Ms. Turney?
I would certainly expect that to be the case, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan?
The final item of business from the committee for council is I'd like to move the council board tender T7854713 to Nova Bus, Division of Volvo Group Canada, Inc., in the amount of $1,782,000, exclusive of GST. I think one thing that was notable about these buses is that they are low, ah, what's the word I'm looking for? Low-floor buses, and I think that completes the fleet for low-floor buses. So that's an advantage to our citizens that use transit.
Thanks very much, councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Rice?
Are these replacements or additions?
Replacement, all.
I believe there was three, yeah.
You in mind?
Three replacement buses and one for expansion of services.
And then we sell the old ones, right?
Yeah, typically, but I think...
Not for much, but...
Whatever they can get at auction. I'm not sure what a bus with, you know, half a million kilometers or whatever it is on them. Whatever they can get at auction, I'm not sure what a, what a bus with a, you know, a half a million kilometres or whatever it is on them. One thing that was also noted at the committee meeting was the provincial funding that comes in, basically means that the cost of each individual bus is about $94,000 to the city of Grand Prairie. So significantly less, so a significant portion of this is from grants. Councilor Tarrant?
I'd also like to add that it came out at the committee meeting that the buses that we're purchasing are, they have new stainless steel frames, which will significantly increase the lifespan of the buses. Apparently with the old buses, you know, after so many years, we had to do a $95,000 retrofit, and this should mitigate that and extend lifespan, so I think it's a good purchase going forward.
Thanks very much, Councilor Tarrant. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight?
Those were all the items that committee wished to send forward to council.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. We did have two delegations, the AquaTerra one, the second AquaTerra delegation was obviously dealt with, but I wonder if we could have a motion for the, for the resident? Councilor Radburn?
That we receive Mr. Manish's presentation for information.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We had no notices of motion tonight, and council member reports, Councilor Rice, I think you're the only one with a report today, so we will start with you, and you can update us on AUMA activities.
It's been exciting. I met with the Honorable Diana McQueen, Minister of Energy, with the Honorable Robin Campbell, Minister of Environment, the Honorable Ken Hughes, Minister of Municipal Affairs. I'm fairly excited. I believe we made significant progress forward on the project to replace all the streetlights in Alberta with LED or equivalent would save, I spoke with Mr. Anderson this afternoon, would literally save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, Grand Prairie alone. We have, AUMA has secured a purchaser, this project would be paid for by the sale of CO2 credits. Now, AUMA has secured a purchaser for those CO2 credits, so it's exciting, and I believe it's moving forward. And with Minister Hughes, I believe we are moving forward more rapidly than I had anticipated on the Municipal Government Act review. Also, it was interesting, the last item on our agenda was particularly interesting to me. AUMA was asked to make a report to the committee studying high-speed rail in Alberta. The, the report that we made, and it did receive the blessing of both Edmonton and Calgary, City of Edmonton, City of Calgary, was get, ensure there is adequate transit in all cities before you move on to interconnecting the two cities. That step one would be to ensure proper transit, adequate transit in all the cities, so that's it.
Councilor Rice, appreciate your work at AUMA. Councilor Thieson, did you have a committee report?
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you. I actually have two committee reports. First of which I'd like to speak to is the library board. You know, it seems like the first two library meetings, all we did was talk about policies and change things up, but this time we were shaking the trees, talking about renovating the, the empty space in the, in the middle of the library and turn that into a kids' programming area. Of course, they're going to probably come to the Community Living tomorrow to talk a little bit more to you all about that, but it was a discussion as to whether we proceed or not based on construction costs, but it appears as if the library is going to move forward with that anyways, as there is a need for programming, and they don't have any other, I guess, leasers that want to come up and rent the space and develop them themselves, so that's fairly exciting for the library. And then the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance as well. I was down in, oh geez, just outside of Fairview here this last week, and we were discussing about the state of the watershed and preparing to get close to our AGM. There's many heated discussions over the amount of area that we need to cover, as well as the monitoring and the flow rates of, of the Peace River and how it affects us. There's also talk of us getting some cleanup money to help clean up oil spill up in the Fox Creek area there, so that is what we covered in the Mighty Peace Watershed, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. With that, we'll start council roundtable, and you know what, we might as well start right there, since your mic is probably on, we'll start with you and we'll go counterclockwise. Councilor Thieson?
Oh, I'm so lucky. You just wanted to hear me keep talking.
Do we ever.
Oh, wow. Well, you know.
Is that "do we ever" with a question mark?
I think it was an implied question mark, but either way, I just have a few things to talk about. It was a rather slow week for, or a slow couple of weeks for getting out there and doing stuff. I spent a lot of times in schools this, this past week. Literacy Week was, was upon us, and as well as today was the National Literacy Day. Myself and Kevin McLean were both at St. George's School today. Not sure if any other councillors were there, if they were. It was awesome, it was a great time had by all. I even got a compliment at about 3:30 from my grandmother, who said that her granddaughter loved my Grover voice, and she thought that I made the books come alive. Outside of that, I was also, Minister Wayne Drysdale was at Cole-Nouvelle Frontier School to announce the infrastructure additions to the school, some extra classroom space and an IT space for the kids to develop, to learn and develop in, so that was really exciting to be a part of that. And, yeah. Outside of that, we had our council strategic planning session. I had to say, it was quite a tremendous time there, just outside of Hinton. I got to learn a lot about Kevin McLean on the ride down there. It's great, I'm sure he learned more than he wanted to know about me, and he sure missed Helen, but I think we got some exciting things coming down the pike.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thieson. Councilor Logan?
Would also mention the council's strategic planning session, and my appreciation for it, particularly in that it was hard planning. We were coming up with actual direction as opposed to any pie in the sky or sitting around gazing at a naval, so whatever else might be. I'd also ask your indulgence, Mayor Given. I thought we would, I would have a chance when we got to delegation business, but we skipped pretty fast over that, and I did want to put, put forward a motion that I, I have received repeated comments in the community in the last while over AquaTerra's move into competing with the private sector organization. And similarly, I've received comments, maybe not quite as many, but we've had two, I think, at council over the number and amounts of, of increases in AquaTerra fees. And I'm not sure that we're sending any of this back in a direct form in terms of information for the AquaTerra Board, and of course, now we have no actual shareholder, shareholders on that board, so I would like to try a motion if you would deem it in order.
Our agenda is usually to receive or take action on a, on a specific item brought forward by a delegation. Would this be more appropriate for a notice of motion, Councilor Logan?
I, I actually believe it would fit in with what the gentleman was saying, actually with what both gentlemen were saying, because one alluded to one part of it and the other alluded to the other part of it, but I would be willing to do it as a notice of motion if you preferred.
I guess, what's the, what's the course of action that you're looking for, Councilor?
It was simply that we correspond with the Board of Directors of AquaTerra, informing them of the input we're getting for our citizens on both these issues. I don't know whether they pay any attention to the radio or the newspapers, but it seems to me to be relevant information to go forward with them, to let them know that of their chief shareholder, there's a lot of people in the community, they are rumbling.
I guess just in terms of process, we do have, AquaTerra presents its business plan to council and to the shareholders of the organization, and they do that before it's finalized and adopted, so we have an opportunity to give input there. And I do meet probably on a quarterly basis at least with the Chair of the AquaTerra Board, so I can certainly relay those concerns if there's a more formalized process that you're thinking of. Maybe I'd be open to considering that, maybe we just give it a little bit of thought of what that might look like before we're voting on it. Councilor Rice?
I guess I, I don't have any problem with us sending a letter just to say that, you know, that we have been receiving lots of input on that, and it is one of the things you would be discussing with them at your quarterly meeting, so it's kind of both. I mean, you'd have to go into great detail, but sort of giving them a heads up.
So, Councilor Logan, I wonder, would you be, would you be comfortable doing that as a referral to the Corporate Services Committee? Then we can discuss what sort of format that is, like it's, I'm not sure that I'd be comfortable at this point saying we've received a lot of input, it would need to be somewhat quantifiable, and so I just, or if we have a regular way of forwarding those or something like that, just like the, comfortable with passing on the inputs, certainly want to ensure the board's hearing what residents have to say.
I'll make that as a motion then, if you wish, that, or if you will, that the question of citizen input on those two items of AquaTerra business, the rate increases and the, and the end of competition with the private sector, be referred to the Corporate Services Direct Committee for direction.
Sure, that's great, thanks. And any council member can make a motion of referral, and I think we'll just add it to the agenda. I don't think we even need a motion for that, certainly we'll be there at its next meeting. Thanks for raising that issue, Councilor Logan. Sorry that we didn't give you an opportunity in the delegation business there. Councilor Logan, did you have any events that you wanted to highlight? No? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just wanted to speak to a few events, talk about youth in our community. I went to service on the 21st for a young Grand Prairie that became an angel at a years old. Her name was Emily Carissa Nath, and that's her there, healthy girl, and the Lord came, got her one day, on the 13th. She's looking down, so, so I wanted to say that about Emily. Also, I was there on the 22nd, 23rd, 24th for council strategic planning, and young children and young families and stuff were big issues there, so more to come. 27th as well, I went to one of the announcements at Montrose Junior High School, which has now become an elementary school, about refurbishing it, fixing mechanical, on and on, and become a K to, to eight, I guess, and I was ever Councilor Radburn at the, at that moment. And I do believe they're heading in the right direction, but they got a long way to go, and the province, Grand Prairie needs a lot of help when it comes to schools, so I congratulate them, yet I don't. Another one is, I went to annexation this morning, process there, and the other one I was going to speak to is children, is Councilor Thieson, we were at St. George's Junior School, K to nine, and I did not notice, I've been reading there for a few years, on and off in Parkside. I was reading in front of 75, and this young girl, Emily Carissa Nath, was in grade three in Crystal Park, and it was all grade three class. There was, they said there were 75 kids, but I think five were missing, 70. It didn't seem like 70 kids, because, well, they're not very big in grade eight or grade three, and I wrote, read Robert Munch, Toothache, and there was another little one, and I was quite proud to do it, and they say there's more children under five and over 65, so we got a big focus in our community. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. June 14th, I brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council. Pardon me? Well, let's try January. January 14th, APEGA, President's Visit and Member Induction, dinner, it was an excellent evening. January 15th, I attended the 10-year Foresight Workshop, hosted by council. January 16th, the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Board Meeting, and the 17th, I went to the opening, two new exhibits at the gallery. I would encourage residents to, if you haven't been to the gallery for a while, check it out. This is, I think, one of the first times we've fully utilized our new gallery. We have, the two exhibits have large pieces of art that fit our awesome gallery, and I think people will be very impressed. I think all the, all the areas in the gallery are being used right now, so it's, it's really great. January 20th, I went to Swan Ave, Swan Ave in Literacy Week, and I read to the Montessori program students, that was fun. 22nd to 24th, council strategic planning session, which was very worthwhile and productive, good work as a team. And on the 25th, I attended the Chinese New Year celebrations, and today I attended both infrastructure announcements, one at Montrose and one at Cole-Nouvelle Frontier. Thank you.
Sir Radburn, Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just note a couple of things. I attended on the 17th the South Peace Regional Archives, my first meeting with them, so it was a good introduction, got to meet the members and some new members, new faces there. They're very excited about the 100th anniversary celebrations, and I know they've been involved with some of the planning of the history, so it's going to be great to see, to see that go on. Also, make note, you can mark your calendars, on February 17th, there's, during the family date, they're having a family history celebration, and families can come down and find out a little bit more about their genealogy and to see, to see more about that. So I as well attended the strategic planning of council over the last few days, last week, and I think it was a great time. I think we set a bold vision for the future, and I'm excited for what's in store.
Tarrant, Councilor Rice?
I attended the APEGA meeting and induction, very, I think, informative and impressive evening, and I congratulate all of those, and we were well represented there, Mr. Galante was there, and so, great evening.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. I'll just speak briefly to a couple of items that I attended that hadn't been mentioned. I had opportunity to attend two corporate orientations. These were our transit bus drivers who last fall became City of Grand Prairie employees, and I just want to relate to council that we have a dedicated group of employees that are very excited to becoming city employees. I was surprised by the length of service of some people in the transit, in transit overall as an industry, that we had people that were saying they'd been bus drivers for 17 years, and we have people that have driven in Vancouver, downtown Vancouver, and so we have lots of skill there, and, and you need to know that they are very happy and very excited to be City of Grand Prairie employees. So I think that speaks really well for such an important service in our community. I also had an opportunity to attend at City on 99, a meeting of hospitality industry businesses who are looking at bringing to Grand Prairie, the possibility of bringing to Grand Prairie a licensed premises accreditation program that would encourage those in the hospitality industry to sort of move beyond what the legislation requires for their licensed premises. So that was really good to see at the end of the information session. The question was, is there anybody that was interested, you know, out of industry, and everybody's hands went up, they were all ready to participate. And this is a program that is modeled on something that was developed in the UK, was launched in Edmonton and Calgary, and Grand Prairie, if it's ruled out here, would be the, the first city smaller than Edmonton or Calgary to receive this and run it. So good to see our crime prevention and industry working together to, to lead on this issue. And other than that, obviously, the council strategic planning, I want to thank all the members of council for their participation, and our senior administration. I think we had a very successful few days, looking forward to finalizing that, bring it, and then bring it forward and sharing it with the community. I think it sets out an ambitious work plan, I think, to say the least, for the course of our term, and I think that's what people elected us to do. Certainly appreciate the work the council put in. And with that, I think we made our roundtable, and we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.